The Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called and ordered at five thirty P M. For this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Item two and three, Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the identification. And Mr. Path will read the pledge allegiance and the Texas pledge allegiance will be led by Mr. Path. Sorry about that.
May we pray? Heavenly Father, as always, we're thankful for every blessing that you give us. And Father, we pray especially tonight for our council members as they have a long agenda and many issues to discuss and make decisions on. Pray that you'd guide and direct them in each and every one, because sometimes the small decisions, Father, make a big difference down the road. So we pray that you would give them wisdom, Father, to do their job tonight. We pray for our country, our state, our city, that your blessings might be upon us, for all saints in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number four, personal desire to address the council meeting. Limit the presentation to more than two minutes unless that item is posted on the agenda. The Texas Upper Meanings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, city council members or employees, as well as individual personnel appeals are not appropriate for the citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. If there is anyone here that wishes to speak about a zoning case or the agenda, please wait until that specific item is called, and you may speak when I open the public hearing for that item. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Alvin Atwood, twenty-four nineteen Bonham Street. I've been coming into these meetings since April of this year, talking about the inaffordability of everything that has taken place. I just got my water bill in for four hundred and eighty gallons worth of water. I used a hundred and fifty-three dollars, fifty-four dollars. My neighbor doesn't shower, full shower, and they don't wash clothes at home because of policies enacted by the city. Right now, I have eighty-two signatures of people that agree with me, and that number is growing, and that was just started Saturday morning. I don't know how else to say it. I've been saying it since April. When my water, I'm using four hundred and eighty gallons worth of water, there's no way I should receive a hundred and fifty-four dollar bill. There is, and there's no excuse that can be made for when your citizens are limiting the water that they're using in the shower and scared to wash their clothes in their own home because they're scared of what their bill's gonna be. There's, we could move money, a lot of money. I know the state of Texas is giving something instead of putting brand-new paint jobs on stuff, man. We gotta, we gotta, we should have moved it over there. Y'all, we have forgotten about the working citizen, the working class, the people that work in fast food, our construction workers, nurses, students. Those people are having a hard time, as it stands, from the policies from our federal government. And now our local government has created policies that have hindered your citizens. You are failing them. There's not five thousand rich people. There's twenty-plus thousand, twenty-five-plus thousand citizens. You're here to represent every one of them, from the poor to the rich. Please remember the working class. We're struggling out here, and your, a hundred and fifty-four dollar water bill for four hundred and eighty gallons is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Carolyn Williams. My address is fifty forty-fourth Street Southwest. And I want to talk a little bit about the taxes. I don't know how they determine how much taxes do you pay on your house. I moved into a neighborhood. All the houses over there just basically went up to like two hundred thousand dollars. I didn't pay that much for mine, but I went to the, the place on Bonham to reject that. And they said, just because you moved into a neighborhood and everybody paying two hundred thou- two hundred thousand dollars for a house, that's how much taxes you are to pay. I said, okay. I didn't like that idea. I don't like that idea. And then I have another property. Come to, I've been owning this property since nineteen ninety-nine. And this is the second year that I have gotten a paper to fill out every year now. And it tells me if you own more than one property, you do not receive a form, make copies, and return it in. Okay, on it, they want to know how many bedrooms, what's the expense, who's managing it, how many square feet, how much they pay a month, and other kind of tax stuff they put in there. I really don't feel like that should be, you know, I'm paying taxes. I don't really feel like it should be any of their business. Okay, then it's not none but that, my place and another lady's place. All the rest of that is vacant lot around me. About three years ago, that house next to mine sold for fifty-three thousand dollars. Okay, now that the lady passed and she's gone, I'm trying to make it short, she's gone, the house sold for a hundred and sixty-two thousand. So that makes my place go up. I don't feel like that's right. And I would like to know, what is this for? And how do we determine how much taxes we pay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Harris, is this the mic?
I'm fine, trust me. I'll speak loud enough. It's a pleasure. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Harley. I'm at twenty-two thirteen Hubbard Street. I just moved here at the beginning of September, and I'm, I love Paris, but there are also some great issues. I am seeing a great lack of accessibility, and not just for myself, but I think of the other Paris community members that might use walkers and wheelchairs and strollers. The sidewalks, lack of sidewalks, the deterioration of sidewalks. There needs to be a better accessibility for the people of Paris. I've been doing accessibility advocacy for twenty-nine years because that's how long I've been in a wheelchair. I would love to volunteer my services to help Paris become the town where Texans can reach higher, like your motto says. I would love for people to believe that they can come to Paris to visit, to see the place, and see what it's about during the summer. So you're saying, yes, we welcome visitors. We welcome our community to come out and do things and be a part of things. And in order to do so, here are the accessible sidewalks, so you can actually access your grocery store. Since being here, I have lost over ninety percent of my independence. I used to be able to take my dog on a three-mile walk. Here, I can't even go for one because there's no sidewalks. Or the sidewalks are so badly deteriorated, I'm not able to use my wheelchair safely. There are a lack of sidewalks. They're on collegiate. So I cross the crosswalk because that's what you're to do. And then all of a sudden, I'm stuck because there's no sidewalk from that signal. So on collegiate and Lamar, which is very busy, I had to take my service dog into traffic just to get to a safe driveway, so I can get and find a new route. I would love, like I said, I would love to volunteer my services, my expertise. I even have a copy of the ADAG, which is the Americans with Disabilities Accessibility Guidelines. I would love to use my knowledge to work with you, so we can bring Paris into the twenty-twenty's and beyond. Let's show that we care about our community. Let's show that we want people to come here and that we, they can go anywhere they want with their families, whether their families use strollers, walkers, canes, whatever it is, they can get to the grocery store, they can get to the shops, they can get back to their motels or B and Bs. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Okay, the citizens forum is now closed. Consider agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of council, which such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, is there most approved items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye? All favor, okay, all opposed say no. Okay. Regular agenda, item number seventeen, discuss and conduct a public hearing act on the ordinance regarding the petition of John Mark Spencer for a zoning change from an agricultural District A to a commercial District C in the city of Paris, block three-zero-six dash C, lot one, LCAD five-zero-one-zero-five, located at four-zero-one-zero North Main Street. Staff.
You have the presentation.
Duke McGee, building official for the staff. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from agriculture to commercial. P and Z and staff recommend approval of the zoning change.
I will open up the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak on this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. I will now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? I hear motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed say no. Motion carries for zero. Item number eighteen, discuss and conduct a public hearing act on the ordinance regarding the petition of Adam Bolton on behalf of Gary Book for a comprehensive plan amendment from split-use retail R, low-density residential L D R to a high-density residential H D R in the city of Paris, block one-nine-nine, lot S P T of two, LCAD one-seven-two-one-zero, located at one-six-one-zero Bonham Street. Staff.
Yes, the applicant is seeking this minor amendment to the comprehensive plan. Also on this agenda is a zoning change request from, and a preliminary and final plat. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from a split-use retail and low-density residential to high-density residential. Do we have any questions?
I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak upon this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Saying none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion? I hear motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed, no. Motion carries for zero. Item number nineteen, discuss and conduct a public hearing act on the ordinance regarding the petition of Adam Bolton on behalf of Gary Cook for a zoning change from a two-family dwelling District Two-F to a multifamily dwelling District Number One, M F dash one in the city of Paris, block one-nine-nine, lot S P T of two, LCAD one-seven-two-one-zero, located at sixteen-ten Bonham Street. Staff.
This goes along with the preceding item number eighteen. This is the zoning change for that. The application is, the applicant is requesting zoning change from Two-F to an M F one. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval.
I will open up the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Saying none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion? I hear motion.
So moved.
All, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed say no. Motion carries for zero. Item number twenty, discuss and conduct a public hearing act on the ordinance regarding the petition of Clint Cheatwood for a text amendment on exhibit nine-B zoning ordinance eight-dash-five-zero-one, home occupations to add one J, Carterer to provide regulations and related thereto. Staff.
As the applicant approached the city and the Lamar County Health District regarding the use of an accessory building in his rear yard for a commercial catering kitchen. The planning and zoning instructed city staff in October meeting to pursue a formal text amendment to section eight-five-oh-one, home occupation of the zoning ordinance and the catering as a permitted use. Planning and zoning and city staff recommend approval of that addition to our ordinance.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Saying none, the public hearing is now closed. If there's any discussion? There's, I hear motion.
I move to approve item twenty as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed say no. Motion carries for zero. Item twenty-one, discuss and conduct a public hearing and act on the ordinance regarding the petition of the city of Paris, Texas to update the subdivision regulations specifically to amend exhibit nine-A, subdivision ordinance for preliminary, final plating, and general requirements thoroughfare plan. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. Recently, the Texas House has approved a House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine pertaining to municipal regulations regarding preliminary and final plating. Starting in November, we've started to make some incremental changes to the subdivision ordinance to reflect these changes. And along with the city attorney's office, the city engineer's office is working on a comprehensive update to match and make sure that nothing in our ordinance goes against the new state rules. We're requiring some more time than anticipated for this and would like to open public hearing and keep it open until the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
At the P and Z meeting of December fifth, this item was continued to the P and Z February fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. I will open up the public hearing tonight and continue to the February twelfth city council meeting of twenty twenty-four. Okay. Item number twenty-two, receiver presentation regarding a summary report on the five West Paris Town Hall meetings. Mr. Path.
Mayor, members of council, tonight, this is a presentation to give you our summary analysis after having done five town halls in West Paris. And just, just as a reminder, and for those who haven't seen, we do have social media out there. We are planning a sixth town hall this Thursday. It'll be at City Square at five-thirty. And it's meant to be a, again, a summary analysis, so kind of a repeat of this tonight. And I'll be having a slideshow with that to kind of give, present to the citizens what we, what we, what we learned, and so. But tonight, the city council has my report. I'll just kind of walk through it. I won't, I won't obviously read it word for word, but I'll kind of highlight key parts and, of course, answer any questions you have about this tonight. But in short, as you remember, back in August fourteenth, Mayor Hughes presented the council. We would be having five town halls. The, the idea being is, is over the last couple of years, particularly the last few months, members of council have heard from citizens the concept that people in West Paris have been quote-unquote "left behind" as compared to other parts of town. So with this, we wanted to, we wanted to hear directly from them, what does that mean? So we can actually understand the issues, we need to, we need to know what that concept "left behind" means. And so we had five town halls. You see on the memo there, we tried to have three at night, one during the day and one in the morning. We tried to accommodate different schedules so that different individuals could all come to this. The goal of this was to listen. And we wanted to hear from the citizens about what the issues were directly, and so we had those five town halls. They were very well attended. We're very pleased with that, very pleased with the turnout. We had over fifty-three individuals speak and/or submit a survey at the town halls. So that was, that was very welcome there. You can see the list in the report here of all of the city officials who attended. And I'd like to thank the council and staff for taking time to do this. It's very important for our citizens to see the members there whenever possible. So we, so that was very good. Also, too, as an additional point, in addition to the comments that we received, a lot of the comments we received were vague. And so we attempted to do some home visits. That wasn't announced. We were just trying to just meet people at home, if possible, if they're available, just to sit down one-on-one and talk about the issues. Again, town halls, they didn't really afford an opportunity to actually sit there and discuss. That was listening. So I think, I think most, all of you took part in that, and again, thank you for doing that. We ended up, although we tried to meet more people, we only ended up meeting with seventeen. A lot of people weren't home, or they didn't call back. But we ended with seventeen individuals from the town hall that we had a chance to follow up with, and that was very, very well received, I felt. I know for those who, those who took part in that, I feel the citizens were very pleased and very, very proud to see their council member and their city manager in their living room and talking about the issue. So that was, that was fun to do. In addition, so while we were in the town halls, we didn't, we as staff and council, we didn't want to wait until the very end before we start doing things. If we heard, heard of something in the process that we thought we can get after, we wanted to get after it. And so after, after town hall number one, at Justice, we, I sat down with all the comments, and I started assigning tasks to staff from Michael to Randy to Richard to Robert Tally to everyone. So we started dividing up the things that we could do. There were some things that had, we had, as you see in the report, we had to wait until later to talk about, but those that we could, like animals at large, or tall grass, or dilapidated structure, or a street light out, things that we can actually get after, we started after. So we started to try to get things done right away, that people were reporting to us. That did require a diversion of resources. We have, we have focused a little more attention over there. That's not really sustainable long-term, but again, this has been a focus, and so we wanted to just focus heavily on that, on those topics, since it, since it is a current, a current issue. You'll see in the report here, the summary analysis, we had about two-hundred-and-seventy-nine different comments from individuals. And so we were taking notes. I'd like to thank Janice and everyone else who took notes during those town halls. We compiled those notes. You'll see in the report there, pages eight through twelve, are, is a compilation of all those comments. I then categorized those into about twenty-nine different topics. I could have, I could have easily made fifty. But it comes to a point to where a sliver of pie is too, is too, is too small. So I tried to group things to give us some, some, some better analysis to work off. And so, and you see on page four of your report that, that this is a breakdown of all the topic, in twenty-nine different topics. And then for everyone else here, we're, this is going to be online through the website, and so we're going to have this posted online. And we'll be encouraging people to visit this online and to read through this as well. Looking at all the topics, the three, the three biggest concerns that were raised were tall grass, drainage, and dilapidated structures. Those are the three biggest ones. Some notable second places in this were, were streets, tree limbs, utility rates, sidewalks, street lights, and trash pickup. And then there's, there's a whole host of other items that were one or two mentioned there. Again, we had over two-hundred-and-seventy-nine different comments. There was probably more, but we were writing as fast as we could. So if we missed one, we apologize, and so. Now getting to analyzing this, when we sit down and actually analyze what these issues are, we realize that, that, that these are not, while there are some, you look at the whole list, there are some that we can check off, solved, done. The majority, particularly these top three, tall grass, drainage, and dilapidated structures, they're not ones that we can easily solve. Some of them, just by the nature, mean grass keeps growing. Some of them are the ones that we will, that we fight every single year over and over and over again as, as, as houses age, as, as drainage erodes, or as it grows. These are things that cities, not just us, but cities battle every year through their budgets. Again, streets decay, tree limbs grow. These are all things that we can work on and address, but again, it takes resources, it takes a focus. It may take change of policy. It may take us to relook, relook our budget and, and, and move funds from one thing to another. And so there are things we can do, but again, there's, there's pros and cons to all those movements there. But again, most of these things are not things that we can necessarily prevent either. With Texas law, with, with things like that, there's, a lot of these things are not things that I can, I can stop. I can't keep grass from getting past twelve inches all across town. I can't keep a person from letting their house fall into disrepair. I know people think I should be able to, but this is Texas, we believe in property rights. And so there are some limits as to what I can do. Now, this isn't to say that there isn't some clever law we're not aware of, and so we're always open to any change of legislation, any new ideas and policy. We're always open to things, but again, we have to balance it, we have to measure it against the rule of law, whether something can and cannot be done. So we, so moving on with that, again, now there were some issues brought up that we simply cannot address. Some examples I put in my report here is the top topic of homeless and squatters. That's a very challenging topic for us to address. I'm not saying that we're, our hands are completely tied on that, but again, with our, with our resources, while like a Dallas and a Fort Worth has departments towards that, we don't, we're not budgeting to do that. And so there are some limitations that we have on that. The utility rates, unfortunately, that is an area that we are building a new wastewater treatment plant. We'll learn about that in the next item here. That thing is very expensive. If we had done it twenty years ago, it wouldn't have cost this much. But we're doing it now so we can continue to have sewer in our community. Sidewalks and drainage, I know that was talked about a little earlier tonight, these are things that we can do, but it all costs lots of money. these are things that we can do, but it all costs lots of money. And, uh, so, and we saw just recently, this, earlier this year with, uh, Todd Mitke was looking at tributary four and six for drainage. We saw that's easily three, four million dollars just to try to solve that issue. That's just two tributaries, we have more in town. So these are, again, these are, these are things that we can do, but it requires lots of money. And, uh, and so again, that's policy, focus, raising of resources, taxation, or cutting of services to free up money, there's things we can do, but there comes with cons to that. So, um, so there, so again, while some of these things we cannot do, some things we can do, but they're rather expensive or complicated to, to get done. Um, now also, there are some things in the list that, that we're also, um, like I said, staff are busy going out into the field, uh, looking, looking, trying to address issues. But again, given the way the Towns Hall, Town Halls are, we can't, we can't sit there and, and inquire every specific detail, so, so we're also looking at our things, things we can do, like for instance, we've had a few drainage, drainage issues that end up being on private property. We don't touch private property, that's not legal. And, uh, so, so those things, staff are going out there, finding out, okay, public yes, private no. So we're, we're kind of working our way through those things. Nevertheless, as you look at this, um, I get to my recommendations here, um, to kind of get, bring this thing to an end, uh, and, and answer questions. Again, a lot of the topics we have here are things that we're already budgeting for, uh, things that we do year after year after year. Uh, patching streets, uh, mowing, mowing, uh, mowing tall grass, dilapidated structures and so forth. So my rec, my recommendations are, first off, where specific issues were raised, like example, a street light. We keep working those to try to address it. So the whole two hundred and seventy-nine list we have there, keep working those, uh, until, until we've accomplished all that we can accomplish on that list, so, so keep working on those. And I've already assigned to staff every one of those items, and so, if you were to look at my master spreadsheet in my office, you would see a name next to all two hundred and seventy-nine items. And, uh, so we, I've, I've, I've signed those that I can, and we're working on those. Again, some we will do, some we will find we can't do for whether, whether it's cost or it's on private property and so forth. Secondly, um, in my report earlier, I mentioned, I did mention tonight in my report, I talked about the housing study. Uh, uh, one of the goals of the housing study is to gain ideas on policy changes, on, on, on ordinance changes, things that we might do differently in Paris that others may be doing that we don't know about, that may have a rehabilitating effect on West Paris and all of Paris. So that's one thing, I, so I recommend we continue with that process. Uh, we're about, uh, not, about two months into that, we've got another ten months to go, so I'm hopeful that when the housing study is done, we will have some good recommendations that we might be able to implement to help impact West and all of Paris, uh, in a positive way. Uh, three, I think we continue to incrementally increase the budgets of public works and code enforcement. Again, the top three issues were tall grass, dilapidated structures, and drainage. Those are areas that, that we spend a lot of money on every year in, in code enforcement and public works, and I think we have to continue to increase that budget. It's, 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 it's a, it's a growing issue. As our town continues to age, we, we're going to have to keep up trying to, trying to spend, put more money towards that. We have been doing that the last three or four years since I've been here, we have been adding to those budgets, but again, there's obviously a need for more. Um, so we'll be talking about that in our next budget cycle, so that's one recommendation. Um, I think we should also, uh, create an online portal. One of the concerns that was brought up was citizens were, 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 were saying that I, I reach out to the city and then I never get feedback back. First off, I'd like to encourage everyone, uh, uh, that if, if you ever run into a situation where you're trying to talk to a city employee and you're not getting response back, please reach out to a council member, uh, reach out to supervisor, and ultimately, reach out to my office. Um, we want to give you a response. We may not give you the response you want to hear, but we want to at least give you a response. I don't want anyone to ever not receive a response who's asked for one. So one thing to do that, um, we're looking at, uh, using our MyGov Five software, it has a feature that we, that we can make available to the citizens to where you can report an issue online and it tracks it. There's accountability with that, where I can see it, Rob, Doug, other staff can see it, and so we can see, uh, uh, citizen, uh, Citizen Tom submitted a, a, an issue about a pothole in the corner of Bonham and, and Twenty-Fourth. Uh, that got assigned to Mike Wade. Uh, we can see Mike Wade can respond, I got it done or I didn't get it done, and we can then follow up, or Robert Tally, or, or, or anyone else we have. So that's an, it creates accountability, so that's one thing I'd like for us to look at, trying to work into our system, is, is giving everyone that avenue to where they can, they can submit an issue and, and see it tracked through the system. I've seen some other towns that have that, it's, it's very, it's very cool, and, uh, so I'd like for us to look at doing that. And lastly, again, um, it, back to the communication, if anyone ever experienced issues with, with communicating with staff, please, uh, don't stop there, contact supervisors, contact council members, and ultimately, contact my office. And again, like I said just a few minutes ago, we don't want anyone to never get, never not get a response when they ask for a response. Again, you may not get the response you want to hear, but you, at least want to make sure you get the response, you, get, to get a response, and so, um, that's it, and, and that's it very shortly. Um, it's been, it was a very, very good process, I believe. We, we, I think, talking to council members, I believe, it was well-received. I think members, I think, uh, members of the community enjoyed, uh, an opportunity to talk face-to-face with their representatives, so this was a, this is a very much a well-worth effort, and so I'm proud that we did that. And again, we're not done, we're still working through, through items on that list. Uh, we've got a lot done. I, I'd like to just brag on a couple of things. Um, again, uh, Police Department Assistant Chief Tuttle assigned one of our officers to systematically look at every street light in town over a course of a month. Excuse me. He identified over a hundred and seventeen burned-out lights, uh, fifty-seven of them in West Paris, and so we've reported all of those to Encore, and so that's, I'm very proud of that. Uh, we had, we've had a number of houses that, 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 that we've torn down, we've had, this has been a lot of things that we can brag about, that we've been working on, and we, we really appreciate of, of, of citizens bringing to our attention. So again, I'd like to just remind everyone to please be our eyes and ears. I know staff are out and about, but a lot of times, if you understand the role that staff play, we're very reactionary. We, we tend, we spend a lot of our time chasing complaints, and so we get a complaint, we head to the complaint, and we may pass by issues, and so please, uh, uh, help us out, and so, uh, we don't want to miss things at the same time, uh, we want to keep getting priorities done, so. A lot of words there, I hope, I hope I made sense. Um, I'll answer any questions the council has.
Questions? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Path. Item number twenty-three, receiver presentation from Garver Engineering regarding the status of wastewater treatment plant project.
Mayor and Council, we are well into construction for Phase One of the wastewater treatment plant project, so, uh, I would like to welcome back Lance Clement with Garver, uh, to kind of give us, uh, a summary of what got us here, where we're at, and where we're going forward, and that's going to include, uh, information for Phase Two of this very important project. And as well as Lance, I would like to, uh, welcome Alfredo Solano, Jim Snowden, they are with Thail, our general contractor for the project, and I'd also like to welcome Austin Visconti, he is the resident, uh, on, resident observer, inspector for the project as well. So without any further delay, Lance, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, thank you all for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity to come back before you and talk about this, uh, very critical project for the city. So first, uh, we'll go through a recap of the project background. The plant site has been in operation for over eighty years. Now you may remember a portion of this presentation from when we first started talking about the need for the project. This goes all the way back to nineteen thirty-six, whenever the plant was first constructed and expanded again in nineteen forty-four, but an important thing to point out there is how the plant has been in operation for so long with very little improvement over time. So it's a large capital expenditure from back in nineteen thirty-six that Grayson had alluded to earlier, really hasn't seen a lot of reinvestment back, and as a result, um, the existing wastewater treatment plant uses outdated and inefficient equipment. And, uh, kudos to the city and to your leadership for moving forward with the project to address this. Um, there were multiple areas of the facility that were unsafe for operations and maintenance staff. This was evident as we went through the engineering for both Phase One and Phase Two. We witnessed multiple areas that we knew were on the, uh, critical brink of failure or, uh, safety issues, and so we knew that that was driving the importance of both of these phases of the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant also receives significant INI during wet weather events, so I'll talk about Phase Two, and a big portion of the Phase Two work is the influent pipeline. Um, right now, that influent pipeline is old and deteriorated, and even though you have peak flow equalization upstream of that line during storm events, you still see storm surges at your plant, up to twice the flow that the plant would normally see, and so that comes with a significant cost for both cost of treatment, but also the time of your operators in trying to adapt and address these emergency scenarios. Regulations for the treated wastewater have changed over time, which reduced the effectiveness of the existing plant, so not only is the plant old and at the end of its useful life, but also the regulations have increased as time has gone along, so the plant's effective capacity was limited with those increased regulations, therefore the need for both phases of this project. And the plant has also received consistent discharge violations, so if y'all remember back prior to even Phase One of this project, we all agreed that, um, it was to the point for the discharge violations where if the city did not take the action and move forward with the project, that we would see TCQ and ultimately, the EPA become more involved, which was a serious concern, but it really underscored the need to move forward with both phases of this project. And also, before we jump into the descriptions on Phase One, I did want to point out one more time, the city staff and operators should be commended for the level of compliance that has been achieved at this aging facility, so this isn't all bad news. Uh, the great shining, uh, example that the treatment plant operators are and the city staff in keeping that operating and running through the best of compliance that they're able to with the existing equipment. All right, so progress to date. Uh, as I've alluded to, we agreed on a two-phase construction plan to improve the plant. We broke it into two phases for two reasons. One, because the progress of construction. We knew that there were certain areas within that plant that the contractor would have to construct first before they could then turn around with the available footprint on-site and construct the second phase. It also came from a cash flow perspective, so we've been working with your staff in great detail to identify the most optimal cash flow scenario to construct these improvements and still maintain affordability within the city. This ultimately was the best approach, uh, for the city. Phase One is in construction and Phase Two is ready for bidding, so we started Phase One construction back in January of twenty twenty-three. We're currently on track for a substantial completion at the end of twenty twenty-four, so we've got about a year left of construction. And Phase Two, which I'll touch on at the end of this presentation, we've just completed a hundred percent design, we've submitted it to the state for approval, and now we are targeting currently the Q-one of twenty twenty-four, so coming up in January through March, advertising that with an anticipated target bid award in late spring, early summer twenty twenty-four. All right, Phase One, construction progress, here you can see, just to refresh you with the previous site before we begin improvements, here's our 3D rendering of what the project would look like after the improvements are complete. Here, I'll take you through each of the, my major processes at the plant, what it looked like from our 3D model, where we're currently at in construction, so this is the exciting part. Here are the primary clarifiers, you can see we've now begun excavation at the primary clarifier site to then build, uh, those concrete structures down in the ground, and in the background, you can see that orbital basin, um, that will eventually go away and will construct within that footprint for the, uh, new improvements. Here's the 3D rendering of the aeration basins, and this is what the basins currently look like today. We actually have more pour scheduled. I say we, uh, that's actually Thail Construction, uh, who's been excellent to work with on this project, so we've been really impressed with the quality of work that we're seeing, but also the teamwork from the entire construction team, the city staff. Um, we see a very much, how can we save the city money as we construct these improvements, but still end up with a quality, uh, plant at the end of the day? So we've been, uh, very impressed with, with that progress to date. Our final clarifiers, you can see we're building the fourth, set to rehab the existing clarifiers once that construction is complete. Now I'll hop over to our Phase Two facilities. Um, one of the primary components that I touched on is the influent force main, so currently, it's a mix of pressure pipe and gravity pipe. This, uh, proposed Phase Two would convert all of that to pressure pipe. Here's the existing FEB pump station site. Uh, we've got several improvements that are planned for that location, including a new headworks and new lift station. Here's the new influent pump station that would convert that existing influent pipeline to all force main, which would remove the anticipated, uh, stormwater INI that the plant is currently seeing during those storm events. Uh, we also have headworks planned for Phase Two, this is very critical to remove solids before they even get to the plant, so this investment that you're putting into the plant with Phase One would be protected by this component of Phase Two to prevent any sand, any large gravel, any large solids from hurting those processes downstream. We also have sludge de-watering, so this would provide the needed capacity for the plant staff to be able to, um, to be able to not only digest, but also store solids until, uh, weather conditions or hauling operations are able to remove that solids from on-site, and we're also adding capacity at the belt press facility. Lastly, an administration building, this would also house a lab for the plant staff to be able to conduct all their required testing by TCQ there at this new main building. All right, looking forward, so as I mentioned, we're targeting December twenty twenty-four for Phase One to be substantially complete, which means the entire plant is up and operating as it was intended in design, with final punch list items going through March of twenty twenty-five. And then Phase Two, like I, uh, previously alluded to, we're targeting January twenty twenty-four to go to bid, um, also for construction services, which we're currently doing on Phase One, that includes construction observation, administration, and executing the project. And then lastly, targeting December twenty twenty-five for final completion of that Phase Two. So this should dovetail nicely from the Phase One construction progress and leave you with an overall complete project by the end of twenty twenty-five. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you all for the time.
So again, Council, here's your opportunity, you have the contractor on-site, so if you do, should have any questions, by all means, please ask.
Absolutely.
The only thing I will add to Lance's presentation, a few months back, uh, I had brought to your attention the potential need for additional property for Phase Two. I'm happy to report to all of you that that's no longer on the table. Uh, the, the design team was able to come back in, and we're going to build everything in the existing footprint, so.
Okay, great.
No questions?
No questions.
Some additional information, just to speak of next steps, um, so, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be working with our financial advisor and, and rate consultant engineer to start planning out, uh, the Phase Two bonding, uh, that'll be coming up here in the next couple of months. Our plan is to bring back to you those documents in January, February, March, I'm not exactly sure just yet, we're sort of working those details out. Um, and so, and then also too, just to, just to, uh, uh, remind everyone that it's the recent successes, um, we have been working, trying to alleviate the pressure on rate payers, uh, we just, we just successfully refunded and restructured a bond, we had two thousand and thirteen GEO bond that we re-refunded and restructured, which saved an annual one point four million, again, annually, one point four each year, uh, that, that, that's existing revenue being received that we can now divert to the next phase, and so instead of asking for a new one point four, we freed up an existing one point four every year on that. And our budget this year, we also, uh, we also moved some funds around between general, we, we, we restructured our GEO bonds and, and utility bonds to move one point five million of utility revenue over to the GEO side because we had some, we had some retiring debt, so again, that freed up another one point five of existing revenue, again, revenue we're currently receiving that can also be applied towards the next bond, so that's two point nine million right there, uh, that, that every year, two point nine, that we've, that we have, uh, freed up going forward for the next phases. Now, that, that won't cover the whole Phase Two, but it's a good chunk right there, and, uh, and we're also looking with our financial advisors on different types of bonds we can pursue, that should save interest, interest for us, and, uh, of course, with the phasing of the projects, that's helped, helped us wean into this, so we have been working hard to try to find, uh, uh, smart ways to make this happen, and financially, so. Uh, but I just want to re- remind that, that those were some big successes that, that we've had that we're very proud of.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number twenty-four, discuss and act on a resolution approving an amendment to residential tax abatement agreement with, we're going to Paris. abatement agreement with, we're going to Paris LLC dated May 9th, 2022. Pursuant to the 2022 census, the subject property located within the city of Paris, Lamar County, Texas, is included within an enterprise zone, which pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 2303, and the Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act, Texas Tax Code Section 312.2011, also constitutes a designation of the area as a reinvestment zone. The subject property is located at 635 Northwest 7th Street, Martin Edition, Block A, Lots 1-20, LCAT number 12932, Old West Gate Apartment Complex, inside Northwest Loop 286 in the Northwest Paris, Census Block Group 482770006001032. The planned investment includes $1.8 million in real property improvements.
Well, by the time you've read all that, there's not much more for me to say.
Please, say something.
We did approve, you approved a residential tax abatement for this property that's commonly known as the West Gate Apartment Complex back in May of 2022. According to the terms of that agreement, they were to have completed the, the improvements by this May, within 12 months of the execution of the document. That has not happened due to some financing issues and some other considerations that the developers have run into. Back last month, council authorized me to draft an amendment to that tax abatement agreement whereby the, the owner will have until May 31st of 2025 to complete the improvements. But they must secure the property or otherwise commence construction no later than February 12th of 2024. So what I've done is prepared a resolution with that amendment. The company has reviewed it and said it's fine, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Any discussion? Want to hear a motion?
I move to approve item 24 with a deadline for completion of May 31st, 2025.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say no. Motion carries, 4-0. Item number 25, receive a presentation regarding power lines in the city of Paris.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to John McFadden. He's our, he's our new public information officer. He's been, he's been busy working on this topic. And so John has a presentation for the council.
I've kind of, mayor and counsel, I've kind of inherited a little bit of this in regard to the utility side of things and specifically power lines. So I came in learning that information that had already been gathered by staff prior to my arrival. One of the tools that I'm working on implementing now is a webpage to try to help our citizens to communicate easier with all the different utilities, not just our own water utilities. So with this webpage, which is located at paris texas.gov slash local utilities, citizens can go here to find all the contact information for the different utilities that serve our citizens. Obviously, one of the primary things we heard a lot in the town hall meetings was related to power lines and streetlights. We heard that pretty often throughout all five meetings. So I'll jump to that portion of the, of this webpage. And just so you know, this is all one page, so it's just a matter of scrolling up and down, but at the very top, you can click one of the icons and go to the section that you're particularly looking for at that point. So if a citizen wants to report a streetlight outage, they have several options. They can utilize the link here to an Encore website where it's a full graphical interface. I'll just go ahead and jump over and show you. And if you then zoom in on Paris, within a couple of seconds, hopefully they'll start populating in the different streetlights that are available and then takes you step by step through reporting the outages. So each one of these icons is a streetlight, the yellow are streetlights with the blue being guard lights, which the difference there is a guard light is paid for by the citizen. So it may be in their backyard, it may be on a business property or whatever, but it is maintained by Encore, but paid for by the citizen. So the yellow streetlights are the true streetlights that we refer to, and the city covers the cost of those in an agreement with Encore. So if a citizen needed to report a particular streetlight, say this one on Southeast 21st, they click on it and immediately they're given, given the latitude and longitude information on it, which is not really going to be relevant, obviously, to them, but it's pretty simple. They can report the different type of outage that's happening, whether it's broken glass or it's completely not working, or it's going on and off repeatedly. They can add additional comments. It'll ask them for a little bit of contact information and then they submit it and they are given the opportunity to request a response even from Encore once the job is completed, if they decide to, to provide their email address or other contact information. So Encore really has a nice product there. In regard to the other utilities we have on this page, we do have our own water utilities, water sewer utilities. And because we do have a few of our citizens that are served by Lamar County Water, we did include their information, their website, their contact information for reporting even after hours and during holidays. We have our sanitation and solid waste. Obviously, that'll be changing after the first of the year, we'll update all of that information. Natural gas provider is obviously Atmos for the entire city, so all of their information is there. They have a good informational page of their website about recognizing gas leaks, so the citizens can look at that if they suspect there's a gas leak. And then they also have some offerings for text alerts for outages and tracking those outages. Encore, a lot of this information, if we haven't already met with the utilities ourselves, I found all of their information on their individual webpages and just imported it over to our website so that it's easily accessible to everybody. We do have a few primarily commercial customers of Lamar Electric within the city, so their information is included under electrical distribution. And then for both utilities, both electrical utilities, we have information about reporting fallen or sagging utility lines. The things we've heard from the different utilities we've already talked to is they don't want people to go out and try to figure out if it's an electrical line, or if it's cable, or if it's telephone, or if it's fiber optic, or whatever it is. They just want it to be reported as if it's electrical, so that they don't get near it, they don't take that risk. And so we've just shared that information over to them, report it. They can call 911 and give them the information. And then for each of the two electrical providers, Lamar Electric and Encore, their phone numbers are provided. If the citizen wants to continue past reporting it to 911, they can report it directly to those companies as well. Encore does provide a detailed power outage map. Lamar Electric does have an outage map as well, so they can track all of those things. Tree trimming is one topic that came up a lot. And so there's some information there about the preventative maintenance that the two utilities do. And so that, I won't read it all to you, but essentially Encore is on a five-year rotation for pruning their trees. Lamar Electric is on an eight-year and to get their full service and, and they cover, they cover actually all of Lamar, Red River, and half of Delta County. So they do have a pretty good sized area to try to keep up all the, the rural areas of, of tree coverage, which I'm sure is a challenge for them. But then we're not limited on internet providers to just the ones I have here, but these are generally the primary here in town with Wi-Fiers, Vive, Optimum, and AT&amp;T. So their information is there. And again, we're back down to the streetlight reporting area here. And then of course, a reminder to call 811 if you're going to dig, to try to save outage for other folks. So hopefully this will be a tool that our citizens can use, as well as we can use it internally for when we do field request from citizens by phone or in person. It's a good, just con, good grouping of all the information to make it easily accessible. As far as maintaining this, I do have it on my calendar to review it quarterly. In addition, we do have a tool with our website that will check for dead links on our entire website. So if one of these utilities does change a link to a particular page that we have referenced and that, that utility portion of our website will tell us that that link has gone dead and we can go correct it. So are there any questions?
No, I think it's a great working tool for the citizens of Paris. I think working with the West Side Project also allowed us to give us an opportunity to work throughout the city of Paris as a whole. So I appreciate you guys working to get this done. Any discussion, any questions?
I do have a question. Is there a way to respond back to the citizen that reports, yes, we got this, we're working on it?
If they report it to us, certainly we can, as staff, and especially once we implement the MyGov 5, that'll even be easier to track all of those things. And if one is starting even to fall through the cracks, there's supposed to be notices back to different staff levels to make sure that things are being tracked and responded to appropriately.
Any further questions? Okay, there's no action on this item.
Well, I'd like to real quick, just a little plug here. Special thanks to Mr. McFadden and the work he's doing as our new public information officer. And so doing great work, if you visit our website, we've got a lot of revamps coming, and this is one of those, and social media. And so the whole role about trying to educate our, our citizens, this is what, this is just one thing that he's done to help, help give our citizens more information about services we provide, so, and, and, and things in our community. So very exciting what we have in front of us. So thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number 26, discuss an act on addition of bid alternate number one in amount of $13,500 to the Lloyd D. Neighbors demolition project for the Belford Building demolition project staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. I come before you to ask for consideration of a change order for the Lloyd D. Neighbors contractor for removing and preserving nine sets of bell chains and stars from the old awning from the Belford Building. They were not included, to my error, in the previous recommendation of approval of bids. I should have caught it, but I didn't. So I would like to ask for it now as, and as also the, the, the schedule has obviously been accelerated for the demolition, and so they have done the work already. But if this is not chosen to be approved, then that's fine. We don't, just don't get the chains and stars. But regardless, they, they, they have saved them, even though the building has been largely demoed.
All right, is there any discussion? Want to hear a motion?
I make a motion that, that we accept the change order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. I oppose, say no. Motion carries, 4-0, sir. Thank you, sir. Item number 27, discuss an award of bid in the amount of $237,769 to One Reef LLC of Paris for a service related to the asbestos abatement in the Grand Theater and authorize the city staff to negotiate a contract.
Thank you. The Grand Theater located at 21 Lamar Avenue is in quite the state of disrepair, and we have prepared, the council's approved advertising of bids of projects, and we've received six responsive bids from contractors to abate the asbestos and biohazardous removal. Just for your information, the biohazardous removal is pigeon manure from the intrusion of pigeons. So it's nothing super, it's not like toxic waste or anything, but just has to be considered as a biohazard once the pigeons intrude a building. And so we have received six, six responsive bids on November 9th. These range from approximately $237,000 to $416,000 for this asbestos and biohazard remove, abatement. And they're also going to get, basically get the building ready for remodel or rehabilitation through a nonprofit group within the town. The, this would include scraping off asbestos from the brick and things like that, the ceilings, the bathrooms. If you remember tending in the, the, going into the bathrooms upstairs, there's tile in there, it was asbestos tile and the glue to hold them on, things like that. So it has to be taken down to the studs, but it's going to be a great way to protect this resource in the downtown area. The downtown has been in a, under a constant state of revitalization, and as a city resource, a city-owned grand theater, we, we propose that this be accepted. Based on project experience, expertise, completing a site inspection with the properties, qualifications of the project manager, and the ability to meet specifications, and the time identified to complete the work, One Reef LLC of Paris, Texas, has recommended to be awarded in the project with the amount of $237,769 and zero cents. They are also the lowest responsible bidder. As a result of their asbestos abatement and interior demolition experience in urban environments, it is, as well as offering the best value of the scope of work, comes our recommendation. City staff had initially had the cost estimate of approximately $100,000 for this work, and during the valuation of the bids, they did come in higher than expected by approximately $140,000 above that. One thing we noticed, myself and Paul Dennehy, the architect that designed this project, that the three lowest bids were grouped fairly close together. And then the, those groupings were the lowest being approximately $237,000, the next lowest being $260,000, and $297,000 above that. From consulting listed references based on the bids, it was very apparent that there's an abundance of work, work available to contractors right now in a large, in, in not just northeast Texas, but all throughout Texas and the southeast or the southwest United States, mostly at school districts is what we've noticed. A lot of school properties being renovated, maybe bond, bonds being funded for remodels of schools, and the asbestos contractors are very busy, so that drives up prices. Relative to our scope, during review of this process, I also identified additional equipment that should be removed at this time. There's no better time to remove heavy equipment about the size of a small bus in some locations that we just needed to get it out of there, and that adds to the cost, because sometimes that needs to be subcontracted out to heavy machinery demo folks, because as located in the basement of the Grand Theater or backstage, it's very inaccessible, it has to be hand removed. So we propose that One Reef be accepted as the lowest responsive bidder, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
All right, real quick, just for transparency, yes, we had budget $100,000. It came in at 237. The, the source of funding that we'd be using for this is ARPA. We had, as you recall, we budgeted a million dollars for the Belford Building. It came in at 600, it came in at less than $600,000, so we have available funds via that in order to help move over to make this possible.
Is there any discussion?
The scope of work has been talked about with the Paris Grand Theater Project Group, and they're happy, they'll accept the state that it ends up with and it'll take over from there, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. Dr. Joseph Portugal is, he's their, he's their lead spokesperson up for the board, and I invited him tonight, he couldn't appear tonight, he works for University of Texas, and so he couldn't be here tonight, but he, but he was very pleased with what we've done so far. He wanted to pass on his, the board's thanks for this project. But yeah, but no, by the agreement, the, they would, they would be responsible for the rehab of this project. So, but as we, as we come to find out that it's easier to raise donations when you can see a nice clean product than you can actually tour through there versus, for those who've seen it, it's, it's in very rough shape. So it's very hard to, very hard to visualize the future with way it is right now. So that's why we stepped this up a couple of years ago through our phase one, now phase two process, to help make the nonprofits' job, according to them, much more doable. So.
And one more comment I'd like to add, during the asbestos abatement, prior to the Belford demolition in the old shoe store addition, part of the building on the first floor, the asbestos contractor, which was different from here, but it's, it's a characteristic of the companies that I've ever seen. that I've ever seen, you could eat off of that floor when it was done. And of course, they demoed right over it, but it was very spick and span. It's going to be a great product to show to the nonprofit here, take over, and show to prospective donors that there's a lot of potential and that the building has great bones.
And another piece I had too, is there is, as Tom mentioned, there's a lot of excitement downtown, a lot of rehab going on. And since the city does own this building, this feels right that we do our part with our own building. We're asking everyone else to take care of their buildings. This feels right that we do ours as well, and get it from going, getting into a worse condition.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, will I hear a motion?
I recommend that we authorize the city manager to sign the contract with One Reef LLC for asbestos hazardous material abatement for the Grand Theater.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Right, motion carries four zero. Item number 28, receive representation about the street mill and overlay projects discussed and authorize the city staff to proceed with the design and bidding for 2024 projects. Staff.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, a very exciting item here. We've been working on this for over a year. As you recall, back in the 2324 budget, and we had an item in there on page 11 of the executive summary talking about street mill and overlay projects. Again, as you recall, we had about $2.2 million in an existing bond set aside for streets. We can't use it for anything else, we only can use it for streets. And that project is now done, so this money is now available for other street work. We also set aside another $1 million in the budget, just to help make that a bigger number, $3.2 million. We had a good year, two years ago in revenue. We put some of that money towards a new fire truck, and now this portion of $1 million we're putting towards street mill and overlays. Again, as we saw in the west Paris Town Halls, as well as all over Paris, there is always a concern about street conditions. So with this, working with staff, I know we have Mr. Mike Wade, our street superintendent tonight, and our public works director, Michael Smith, here tonight. They can speak more to this, see if you have questions about these particular lists here. But they systematically went through our streets in town trying to find, trying to identify roads in most need. Now with this, $3.2 sounds like a lot of money. This doesn't touch all of our streets to begin, even to begin with. So we focused our effort on arterial roads. Again, the goal here, trying to impact the most drivers we can with the money we have. So we look for streets on all four quadrants of town that we know to be heavier trafficked roads. Again, arterial being the type of roads that people tend to use to get from the residential street to their business and shops and so forth. Side note, as you recall, Tech Stop is responsible for maintaining Bonham, Main, Clarksville, and Lamar. Maybe leaving one or two out there as well, Jefferson Street as well. So you will not see them on this list here, because those are Tech Stop maintained roads. 20th Northeast is also another one, they maintain that one. But so we were, so that's typically, arterial roads tend to get you to those main roads. So looking at the list here in your agenda memo, we identified a number of streets here. I'll go through them. We identified Graham Street, .5 miles of that, North Collegiate Drive, .9 miles of that, Fitzhugh Street, .7, 24th Street Southeast, .5, Pine Mill Road, .6 miles, 7th Street Northwest, .1, and I'm going to come back to that one. Pine Mill Road, .3, 20th Street Southeast, .18, 12th Street Southeast, .6 miles, West Sherman Street, .2, 13th Street Northwest, .6, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, .2 miles, West Campbell Street, .4 miles, and West Center Street, 1.2 miles. Make sure I'm not missing any here. Okay, yep, I got them all. So, and you see in the list there, there's a dollar amount. We've done the best we can to identify a cost. We've talked to contractors in the area. These are estimates that we put together. We've refined it and refined it and refined it. This would be a two-inch mill and overlay. There'll be some additional work, some spots will require a little bit more than a two-inch. That'll have to be kind of played out in design. But again, these are rough estimates here that we have, for a total of about $3.29 million. So you see here, we have a little bit more than we have budgeted, but you never know what the cost will be until you bid them. So they may come in under, they may come in over. So the thought would be that we'd bid all of these, and then we would work together to identify the priorities of this ones, that prices came in above 3.2. And nothing to say that if it's a little over 3.2, we might be able to scrounge up some money to make that happen. And so to go back to 7th Street Southwest, a little bit different here. This is, this is, this is south of the Loop, near the SEFCO South Station. As you see in my memo, I talked about in there that the city, when we first, when the project first happened a few years ago, the city had not required them to rebuild 7th Street Southwest. This is something that we do require these days, but again, it was different management, different council at the time, it was different focus. Today, we do enforce our codes. We try to put the cost on the taxpayers, try to put it on the development as much as possible, reasonably possible. And so with this, we are now responsible for that street. But as you drive that street, the heavy truck traffic rips that street up all the time. And so we are constantly fixing it over and over. It's a major drain on our resources. And so with this, we did approach SEFCO. It's very hard to, after the fact, make them come and fix, redo that road. They have, though, agreed, they recognize this is a problem. And they recognize that we can't sustain that. And it comes a point to where if we don't fix it, we may have to just close the road. Well, that road affects Chisholm ISD, affects other houses over there, so there's a lot of traffic impacted by that one road. And so working with SEFCO, they've agreed to pay 50%. This would be a concrete, this would be a full rebuild. So they pay 50% of that, of that cost there. So we would recommend we do that with, along with these projects here. So that's just that summary of that. Some other things here, as you recall, back in October, the city council approved in agreement with Garver Engineering to do some lead-based pipe inventory work. There's a federal law that says we have to replace those pipes within so many years. So they're going to be systematically going through town identifying where lead pipes are. So if we proceed with all these projects here, we try to coordinate that, because the last thing I want to do is tear up a brand-new road, just to put in a lead pipe, fix a lead pipe in there. So pull it out. And so we're, so the goal here is, as we're designing these, and as, we've asked Garver to focus on these streets here. And again, if the council changes the list, that's perfectly fine, we'll prioritize those in Garver's list. But the idea being, they prioritize their inventory on those we've identified for this project that we can then go in and replace the lead pipes before, before we do the mill and overlays. Let's see here, what else do I have here? These are engineer estimates, so it's all based on, the bid will determine the actual cost. Our city engineer, Tom Minkie, would be doing the design for this. This would be about a three to four month process to design it, in which we would then bid it out. Let's see here. And again, we budget $3.2 million. There's a map, including your package, that shows, that shows where these streets are located. And we tried to, again, since we don't have, we don't have enough money to touch every street in town, let alone the streets that we're working on, we had to try to focus on the worst spots. Again, we also, it's not effective to just piecemeal, to pick up here, pick up here. So this would be long stretches of roads replaced to do it right. Now, this list is, this list is up to the council, so this is our recommendation. But obviously, the city council, you have seen concerns out there, you talk to citizens. And so we are, the staff stands ready to add to the list, take away from the list, change the list, go back to the drawing board, whatever you see appropriate. Again, we just, we tried to, there were a lot of streets that we had in here that we had to cut out because limited funds there. So, but with that, I'll answer any questions. And Mr. Wade's here, Mr. Smith's here, Mr. Harris worked on this as well. We'll do the best we can to answer your questions. But otherwise, the request would be that you authorize us to proceed with a list that we can start working towards bidding, the design, then bidding, so.
Any discussion?
What's the timeline on Garver Engineering doing a study on lead pipes?
Doug, can you speak to that, please?
I'm very well into this project, but again, I've already provided those streets that are on the list that are in your packets tonight, and instructed them to prioritize those streets. So when it comes down to it, they'll actually should be able to fairly easily identify if the pipes in this list of streets have any lead-based components in them. So for the entire project, the completion date is September of next year, prior to the deadline. But again, these streets are going to be prioritized in this project with Garver. So we should have an answer pretty soon.
I'll also include some pictures in your packet there too. Just, I mean, you drive the streets every day, you see this, but sometimes it just helps to see some pictures there as well.
Is there any further discussion? I think any street repaired, the city of Paris, will be pleasing to the citizens.
Yeah, I wish I could do everyone in front of their house. And so that's the request. I know we'll probably take some, get some feedback about why not my street, why not this street, but we'll do the best we can to answer those. Again, we had to prioritize off of the greater good, given it costs a lot to do this.
After there's no further discussion, will I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the streets as presented.
All right, is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries four zero. Item number 29, discuss and act on three water line looping projects in the amount of approximately $507,769 and 0.0096 to be funded by a $250,000 lawn head project reimbursement, ARPA funds, authorize and payment to the amount of $750 to RMC for services related to these projects and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Any, Mayor, council members? Looping water line is a means to accomplish the elimination of dead-end mains, which in returns help improve our water quality, improves flow, takes out the risk of water going stagnant, and reduces the dead-end mains that we have to flush all the time. So that manpower can be focused somewhere else. It also helps maintain water to the residents in case of leaks or anything like that. Keeps it a two-way feed going there. With that, city staff has identified three locations for your consideration of taking out the dead-end main. One, let's see what we got pulled up here. One is Pine Mill Road. It will be going from the Loop to 42nd Northeast. That will be taken out of dead-end on the 42nd, behind Walmart, Castle Gate and all that. Help loop all that in there. Their second one will be the Loop between South Collegiate and 6 Southeast. There's a big section there. We put water line through there, which will put water in the PJC, our Paris High area. South of town over there helps everything boost pressure and stuff like that. And then our third one is the Loop over by Campbell Soup. We are going to...
Kimberly Clark.
Oh, Kimberly Clark, I'm sorry, my apologies. To 19th right there. Extending that, there'll be a 12-inch on each side right there. Put a lot more pressure over there and help everything out. With that, we, our options are to approve the three water line projects, authorize RMC to advertise these projects for bid, and authorize city manager to sign any documents related to the projects, request additional information, or deny, deny the three water looping projects. Our recommendation is to approve all three.
And with this, if you were to look at our map, if you look at the citywide water map, you see we have, we have water line pockets. And so we go this direction, then we go this direction. So this is the linking, connecting them all, so that in case you lose water in one, you have a break in there, there's water feeding it from another direction. Again, as Mr. Smith said, that's adding volume, adding pressure. This also makes land more site-ready. As you recall, the third one, Jinx Tonges, we actually started that a year or two ago. But then we had to ship water lines to Lion's Head, because they were more immediate, they were developing. So this is, this is to recontinue that project that we had to stop. And so they reimbursed us those funds, and so we have, we have money there to help pay for those pipes to continue that project that we started. And knowing that particular project there, if you look at West Paris, west of town, our, the residential neighborhoods were on one dedicated line. Kimberly Clark was on one dedicated line. This provides redundancy, so that in case it breaks, they don't lose water. The power plant, Kimberly Clark, they don't lose water that way. And so this is good redundancy, good flow, and also makes the land site-ready, site-ready for development. That's what all these three projects do, is trying to ensure citizens and businesses have water during emergencies.
And it also gives them better water pressure.
Water pressure, water volume. We have exciting development in southeast Paris for the Forest Break Estate project. It puts more water down that part of the area, through that Paris High connection there. Now, I will say again, I'll say this, we had not budgeted for this, but again, we have ARPA funds set us available to make this happen. We looked at this, this kind of came about when we look at our street projects. We identified, we should probably pull our water sewer superintendent in to make sure that, again, if we have bad water lines, we don't want to, we don't want to put a new road over it just to have to dig it up again. So that sprung this, as well, the last couple of years, we've been wanting to loop our entire system on the south side for a long time. Again, it makes the land site-ready for development, and it adds that much added benefit to our current system.
So these would be bid out, that wouldn't be done in-house, is that correct?
Yes, so we have, the RNC cost in here is Charles Edwards. He would be our third-party administrator. We've used him for all of our ARPA administration. His cost is $750, in order to, in order to, in fact, he actually did our last bidding for the water lines for the Jinx Tonges Business Park in the west side there. So he's got the whole process together. It just takes it off of Mr. Harris, Mr. Smith, and it's a turnkey for a $750.
Now, the CIP department will be doing the work.
Okay, big part, yes. That's, I'm sorry, yes.
Charles will be doing the bids and everything, but our CI department will be installing everything.
Yes, I'm sorry, misunderstood you, but that's a key part right here, so I'm ashamed I forgot about that. And so this is all very doable, because we were blessed with a CIP department who actually can install water lines. So we save twice the amount of cost just in labor, because it's just materials, because our guys already exist on our budget, and this is what they do, they specialize in this, and they're very good at it, they're very fast at it, so, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Will I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the three water line looping projects.
All right, is there a second? All in favor say aye. Motion carries four zero. Item number 30, consider and approve future events for the city council and our city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anybody have anything? Will I hear a motion, or a second for adjournment?
I moved.
All right, we are adjourned.
And a reminder for town halls, town hall this Thursday.